Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's Special Committee of the Whole meeting. I proudly call this meeting to order and kindly ask our city administrator, Mrs. Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, you're here.
Ruby?
Ruby here.
Caven?
Caven here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg here.
Casarog?
Casarog here.
Maladra?
Maladra here.
Marx?
Marx here.
McGowan?
McGowan here.
Swanson?
Swanson here.
We have a full house, ladies and gentlemen. As is and has been our custom, I would like to read a brief statement with respect to this evening's proceedings. The meeting tonight is being conducted virtually in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 2020-74. It is prohibiting gatherings of any size...
Gatherings less than ten.
Of less than ten.
Greater than ten, sorry.
Excuse me. As such, it's not practical or prudent to allow the public, press, or other interested parties to be present in council chamber. Staff members are also participating virtually, with the exception of the city administrator to my left and assistant city administrator to my right, who are necessary to assist with the online and virtual experience. As a requirement of the Open Meetings Act, I am required to be physically present at the meeting location. It should be further noted that this will be the city's operating procedure until such time as gatherings larger than ten are, again, permitted. It should also be noted that crawling on your screen at home, if you are tuning in, whether it be through Channel 99 on AT&amp;T, or Channel 10 on Comcast, or even via YouTube, that you can, if you so choose, submit a public comment at publiccomment@genova-il.us. If you're having any sort of difficulty at all, feel free to email that address with your phone number, and we'd be happy to call you as well. Ladies and gentlemen, Item 2, Approval of the Special Committee of the Whole Minutes from January 11, 2021, is the first order of business. Is there a motion?
McGowan, for moves.
Alderman McGowan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Bruno, seconds.
Alderman Bruno, aka Constable on Patrol, makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the Special Committee of the Whole Minutes of January 11? Seeing none? Sensing none? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marx?
Marx, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burkhardt?
Burkhardt, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Item 2 has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We move on to Item 3A, Discussion of the Fiscal Year 2022 Draft Budget. All of you should have seen in the email sent to you by Administrator Dawkins a series of questions. I believe there were approximately eight pages of questions with the appropriate answers attached thereto. Those questions and answers are also attached to the website. Are there any additional questions or comments this evening regarding the fiscal year 2022 draft budget? That's Alderman Swanson and Alderman Ruby. And just for clarification, Alderman Ruby, do you prefer Alderman or Alderwoman?
Alderwoman, please.
Alderwoman, that is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Swanson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of the questions that were in the packet surrounded the hiring of an additional police officer, and that was a question I raised at our last meeting, and were several council members who wanted to hear from Chief Passarelli as to the motivation and the reason that we need to put this in the current year. The motivation for my questions are that whether or not we approved the staffing level a year ago, that was pre-pandemic. We now are in very uncertain economic times, and the question I was raising is perhaps we should consider delaying hiring this additional officer until finances stabilize, particularly on the revenue side. However, I think it would be appropriate if Chief Passarelli could give us a specific update as to the necessity for the officer, particularly in the current year, and if there would be any harm to the city or to the police department to delay that hiring for another fiscal year until finances improve. So I would ask Chief Passarelli, if present, if he could update us on those questions.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about this position. As Alderman Swanson mentioned, the position was approved, the 37th officer in this fiscal year. Obviously, the pandemic has changed a lot of things for a lot of people. As far as the police department goes, we finished the calendar year just slightly behind what we would have pre-pandemic. Certain calls replaced typical calls, as an example. Fraud's increased exponentially throughout the year and maybe replaced traffic accidents, where we didn't have a lot of those in the beginning of the year. My vision or intent with this 37th police officer is to allow an opportunity for our department to better address traffic-related issues that are occurring within the community. While the year started out slowly with accidents and that type of thing, towards the end of the year, they have returned to normal. What we do currently is officers who are on duty, on patrol, are responsible for deploying the speed trailer, putting out the portable speed signs, all of those activities on top of doing extra patrol when we receive speeding complaints. It's not uncommon to have an officer putting out the speed trailer on a midnight shift, getting a 911 call, and having to respond pulling the speed trailer behind the squad car. That's really not ideal, and it's not what we really want to do. We're the only tri-city department that doesn't have an officer dedicated to traffic enforcement and education. I think it would allow our department to better address those issues that I know you all received several phone calls about and concerns about, and allow us to better address those concerns and allow the officers to still handle their 911 calls for service without being pulled away for these other responsibilities. It's a challenge when, as an example, we have a speeding complaint somewhere and we're asked to look into it, and we have one of four officers who are on the street go over and try and sit and run radar, do traffic enforcement, and are quickly pulled away for a 911 call. They don't necessarily get that opportunity to go back and address it, and I feel the addition of this 37th officer would allow that to happen. I think it's been discussed, hiring is a challenge, and it would be likely that we wouldn't be able to even get this candidate into an academy until January of 2022. We have, we'll have three openings shortly, and we have one opening now. We have an officer retiring next week, and I have an officer retiring the first week of May. So those three positions will be the priority fill before we would even get to this 37th slot. Academies are proving to be a challenge. They used to run 70 recruits in an academy class, but due to COVID, that number's been dialed back to 49. And with the current times, there's a lot of officers who are hitting that 25 and 30-year period of their career retiring, so it's very difficult to get an officer into the academy. Most of them have a waiting list as long as the 49 people they're allowing into the academy. As an example, a larger agency south of us just hired 17 officers to fill replacements. So those are always the things that we're trying to balance. So again, I think it would be early fiscal year, or early 2022, before we'd be able to get an officer hired.
Alderman Swanson, you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you. And thank you, Chief. I guess playing devil's advocate, given that we're in uncertain financial times, and if our projections for revenues were to fall short, and the city in six months or in the next fiscal year was in a position of cutting staff, how would that impact this 37th officer if that officer had been brought onboard?
I think it would depend. If that was the cut that needed to be made, you know, obviously, there might be something City Administrator Dawkins may be able to address better than I can, but there are contingencies written into the collective bargaining agreement to deal with those situations if an officer were to have to be laid off or something along those lines.
So we could avoid that scenario if we were to delay implementing this hire until finances improved, or we took a look at it in the next budget process?
I guess...
I suppose we're taking out the possibility of having to eliminate a staff?
So at this point, just keep in mind, this budget year that you're looking at doesn't start until May 1, so that's still three months away. Again, this year, that position was budgeted. We opted not to fill it. I think basically what you're suggesting is that you don't, quite frankly, trust us to be able to make those decisions. And if it came to significant budget cuts like that, we would certainly be visiting with the council to determine which method would be best to cut, whether it be staffing, whether it be capital, whether it be you name it. But to presume that it would be a police officer, I think, is making a big leap.
And I did not mean to presume that at all, and certainly, my intent was not to undercut your ability or any of the department heads into making sound hiring decisions. However, I will say that the news and the economic news is not entirely encouraging out there, and many municipalities are cutting staff, and to be hiring a new staff, whether or not it was budgeted a year ago, just seems to fly in the face of what would be prudent at this time. So I'm taking the conservative approach that perhaps we should consider delaying hiring an officer that was approved in 2004 one more year. I will yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman Ruby, then Alderman Maladra.
Thank you. Actually, the chief already answered my question, so Craig can have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Maladra.
So I certainly appreciate the premise that we're operating in uncertain times. I don't accept the premise that, you know, we've done without this since 2004, so let's just continue to do without it until some undefined time in the future. If our department heads and our staff, you know, can defend the need, which I believe they can, then I think it's incumbent upon us to assure that we have appropriate staffing levels. I was worried about the idea that we would have to lay somebody off, but I'm not the person who has to do the laying off. That, in fact, would be Chief or Assistant or City Administrator Dawkins, and if they're not worried about having to lay somebody off, then I guess I'm comfortable with it as well. The thing that I'm most uncomfortable with is the uncertainty about when we will feel comfortable to fill this position. I would like us to say, here's a metric that we're looking at that triggers a level of comfort. If indeed it's we deferred for a year, I would be disappointed if in a year we brought up yet another reason to defer it further. So we have the numbers that we were presented at the strategic planning workshop. We have the numbers that we receive in our packets. We have the reasoning that went into the numbers that are a part of this budget. On what basis do we reject that reasoning, and what are we looking for instead? No question.
Anyone else on the council? Questions or comments for the chief regarding this topic? Alderman Kilburg, sir?
Reading the information that was provided today, it would appear that this hire would not take place until probably after January 1, 2022 because of just the requirements, the hiring situation, the license, the schooling, and the preparation to bring people onboard. Did I read that correctly?
That is accurate. It will take about two to three months to go through the hiring process to get someone onboard. So with those three immediate openings and ones that are soon to come, those will definitely take priority, so you're correct.
So what's the situation, then? Are we going to be in a situation where we hire existing officers that have already had the training and would be qualified to come onboard immediately? Or does the situation, as far as the academy, present limitations as far as the field and the possible candidates that we could hire at this time or over the next six months?
I think, you know, they're in the process of establishing the eligibility list. The first interviews are later this week, and then in the first week of February, there appear to be some very good candidates on that list. There are some who are certified, have past experience. You know, there's never a guarantee that that makes them the best candidate, but we've had luck with that in the past. So that would be a possibility, that if the academy is problematic and they're a good candidate, they could be brought onboard more quickly than trying to wait for an academy slot to open.
So just so I have a better understanding, then, somebody that already has served as a police officer in another community, that has already gone through the academy, then we require them to go back through the academy for further training before we would hire or before we put them on the street? How does that work, Chief?
They would have to go through our field training program. They'd not need to go back through the Basic Police Academy. So our field training program's 15 weeks. Because we do things differently than a lot of other agencies do, it gives them time to become familiar with our community and our policies, procedures, and the way we operate. But it's generally an easier training process because they have a lot of the basics of police work done. They're used to responding to domestics and accidents, and they know how to make a traffic stop. So it's some of those other things that make that training easier, but it would be just the background and all the requisite testing, and then the field training program.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the committee? Alderman Caven?
Thank you.
And then Alderwoman Ruby?
I don't know if this is necessarily... Mine is a little bit more broad than the overall, just what we're talking about with Chief Passarelli, but, you know, I certainly don't want our police force to be short, but I do think that Alderman Swanson, talking about being maybe even a little bit more additionally conservative, I think definitely is still a valid point. I'm trying to think how I would like to word this, but it's not that I don't think that all the department heads or City Administrator Dawkins aren't capable of what it is that they're doing or that I'm not trustworthy or anything like that, but I guess for me, trying to lean more towards the conservative, even if we think that those budgets are going to wind up being okay, not knowing how everything works financially moving forward, and my topic is a little bit more broad as far as, you know, aside from not just picking on the police department here, but, you know, are there other openings out there that we're looking to fill that we maybe would be able to at least pause on for a little bit, just to kind of lean that direction? And I apologize, I don't know what time the answers to the questions that were submitted came out. I got home about 10 minutes before we got on here today, so in full transparency, I have not had an opportunity to review all the questions that were submitted and the answers that were given, so I don't really have anything else specific to point out right now, but I do think that Alderman Swanson does bring up some good points, and again, that's got nothing to do with that I don't have faith or trust any of the department heads that are trying to do the best for the city and the citizens as well, but I think that those are definitely still some valid points that are raised by him as well. So that's all I wanted to comment on this for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman or Alderman Burkhardt? Which would you prefer?
How about council member?
Council member Burkhardt. There you go.
Joe, I mean, Alderman is fine.
Okay. Alderman Burkhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to Alderman Swanson for raising some good points on this. I mean, and thank you to Chief Passarelli for being with us tonight. I mean, you know, Chief is speaking my language when he's talking about like a dedicated officer for traffic control. All of us, I know, hear from residents all the time about issues with speeding and cars not stopping at stop signs, and Chief is always so responsive in putting an officer out and trying to take a look and getting back to us, so I really appreciate that. I think, again, it's not that we don't trust the department heads, it's not that we don't want to say yes to everything that people need. I think we, you know, I think the city of Geneva does run a tight ship, it's just we're in an unprecedented situation, and I think it's our role as council members to ask these kind of questions and to feel confident when we vote on this budget, because we're the ones who, you know, a lot of times are going to get questions out and about. Chief Passarelli, this sounds great, like they have this officer that would really be dedicated to traffic issues, but how do you, you know, I've worked in a lot of organizations, and I know how you can have, you know, the summer intern who's dedicated to this project, and suddenly, the summer intern's actually filling in for this person who's on maternity leave, and this person who's sick, and this person who's, you know, how would you make sure that this position doesn't just end up kind of filling the gaps that are going to come along when you only have 36 police officers to, at a 24/7 job?
Right. I would think we would just try and avoid that where we can. You know, obviously, if there's opportunities where the traffic unit is assigned on a certain shift, and there's either an officer illness or something that would require us filling it by overtime otherwise, perhaps that traffic unit could slide over and fill in as a patrol officer for the day and fill a patrol beat, but still focus on traffic issues and other things that they would normally deal with. I think it's just one of those things where if we determine, and I believe it is a priority, that's just their responsibility, and that's what we would expect them to be working on as much as as human as possible.
Thank you. What about Chief? What about the issue of body cameras that passed in the General Assembly? Unless you did it today, I don't know that Governor Pritzker signed it, but that would require all officers to wear body cameras. Are you worried about the cost that would come Geneva's way for that? And, you know, that's an additional cost on top of what we have in front of us? I guess it would probably be spread out over a few years, but...
Sure. I mean, the way that the legislation is written, we would be required to have every officer have a body camera by 2025, so it does give us a little bit of time. It's one of our goals this year to research the viability and cost of the camera system and what would be needed to make that operational here, so that we complied with state statutes. They would be a significant cost, the way things look right now, but again, we have a few years before we would have to embark on that, assuming the legislation passes as is. So I think we'll be able to have a good program in place and some good options available that will work for the officers in the community and hopefully be cost-effective.
And then, so we're talking about you might not bring, you could have a vision not even bringing somebody aboard till January. I mean, if we were to include this position in the budget and, you know, things do not turn optimistic or don't turn rosy and some of these scary variants that we're hearing about with COVID, if, you know, if this, if things don't turn around like we all hope they do in a few months, I mean, at what point would we be looking at having to lay off somebody as opposed, I guess what I'm saying is, when would a candidate really become part of the city of Geneva? When do you, when are you, when you talk about hiring, and what's the timeline like?
I think if we were to look to try and have a recruit go to a January academy class, which is usually the first week of January, you know, they would look to be sworn in sometime at the end of December so that they could attend that academy class. So once they're sworn in, they're an employee of the city, so from there, it would just be determined on where we stood with things.
Okay. Thank you. That'll take care of me right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the committee wish to address this topic? Alderman Casarog?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Passarelli, for explaining everything as you did. I had kind of an easy question and then a comment. So the easy question is, in relationship to other cities, how many, how are we staffed on our police department, I guess, compared to other cities? Whether it's maybe a per capita would be easier, and I figure we have approximately one officer per 600 people to date. Are we, are other cities staffed more or less than that?
It really does vary by department. You know, the FBI sets a standard of two officers per 1,000 residents. That's a high number, in my opinion, for our community. I believe last time we did the numbers, we're at 1.66 officers per 1,000. We're on the lower end in the area, but it works for us. I think we're adequately staffed to have outstanding detectives in the detective division, outstanding patrol officers to cover the shifts. What we don't have is the ability to specialize outside of that. So where you'll see in some other agencies where they'll have a task force member, they'll have a traffic unit, they'll have a computer crimes officer, those sorts of things, to kind of keep up with what's occurring in the world, we're doing it with the officers that we have. So our officers carry several specialty responsibilities where they're doing all that in addition to their normal patrol responsibilities. So I think that's where we run a leaning department compared to a lot of other departments.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, my one comment that I've been thinking of in regards to this issue is my predecessor, Alderman Clements, and really the issues that he championed with traffic in regards to our ward down Fargo, down Pen tree, in the areas, you know, we had the speed task force that he did, and I know we had a lot of residents in me and Alderman Marx's ward that were very interested in that, and even actually reduced the speed limit recently on going out to the middle school. So I guess I just wanted to express that, listening to the residents kind of vicariously through that project, you know, I do hear a need in our ward for some traffic enforcement and education, as Chief Passarelli said, but that was just a comment, not really a question, and thank you very much. A yellow floor back.
Thank you, sir. Any other committee member who has not yet spoken wish to do so? Alderman Ruby, or, excuse me, yes, Alderman, Alder, Jesus, Alderwoman Ruby for a second time unless someone else wishes to speak for the first time. Alderwoman Ruby, floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. I'm just trying to be difficult and give you a hard time there, Mayor.
No, no, it's good. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So Chief, thank you so much. I do have just two questions for you. In the Q and A, you mentioned that the hiring process is dictated by state statute. So if you could just walk me through that a little bit, I'm still, I don't fully grasp what that means in terms of are we, is it up to us if we want to hire somebody who has no experience and we want to send them to the academy? Or if we want to hire somebody that has, you know, 20 years' experience, if that's what we're looking for? Is that our decision, or is that dictated by the state?
So the statute basically says for us to hire an officer, they have to be on our eligibility list, which is established by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. So they go through the process of coordinating a written exam, an oral interview process, and a physical exam, physical agility testing. Once a candidate passes all of those things, they're placed on an eligibility list in ranked order. So as the chief, I don't necessarily see or involve any of those candidates. You know, the board are members of our community, so they understand what we're about as a police department. I think they've done a phenomenal job having some great candidates over the years. So when I get the list, I have to go in ranked order down that list to find a candidate to fill an opening. The only thing state statute allows me to do is to skip to a certified candidate, no matter their placement... matter their placement on the list, in the order of their placement. So all those things that we take into consideration, such as maybe that certified candidate looks outstanding and where we stand trying to get someone into the academy and our need for an officer, make it more reasonable to skip to that certified candidate over someone who hasn't yet been to the academy. And there's pros and cons on both. If you're, you're bringing someone on board who's been a police officer in another community, you have to retrain them to what we do. And sometimes those habits are a little challenging to, to change. As where if you have a brand new officer and you send them to the academy, they come back, they're trained exactly how we need them to be from the start. So there are some pros and cons, but it, the statute basically just dictates I have to go through that list in order and can skip to certified candidates.
Okay. So then, the next part of my question that I'm trying to understand is, how do we come up with a budget amount for salary, not knowing if we're hiring somebody with experience, you know, 20 years' experience or no experience? Is it, do we just take an average?
No.
What number do we use for our budget? How do we, how do we come up with that number?
If I may answer the question? We base our vacant positions on, in this particular case, the union contract that's in place now. So we would, we would base it on an entry level because quite frankly, over time with retirements and other things, there's probably, it's not that big of a difference between step one and step three. But we would budget at a step one. We would budget with family insurance, even though it might be a single officer. We budget with the payroll taxes and all of that. But again, it's based on the union contract.
Okay, so entry level.
So for this particular position.
What I was looking for. Okay.
So for this particular position, all in an entry level, police officer with full health insurance benefits comes in at about $96,000.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Well, two things. I just want to direct everyone's attention back to the strategic plan 2025 because two of the main categories in that plan that we all, that we're on board with, to me, support the hiring of this, of this officer and fully staffing our police department. So obviously, those two categories that stand out the most to me are excellent municipal services, which is defined right in our strategic plan as superior delivery and commitment. Again, for excellent municipal services. And then, secondly, in our strategic plan, the category having to do with quality of life, and that subheading, I'm just reading it right off the strategic plan, fostering a resilient, safe, inclusive, and vibrant city. So I feel that a fully staffed police department definitely helps to keep the city safe, safe from traffic incidents and everything else that people rely on the Geneva Police Department to, to help with. So that being said, I have a, I have a question for Chief Passerelli, if you're still with us. And that is, if, as Alderman Swanson suggested, if the scenario came about where we did hire this officer and they went through the, they were sworn in and went through the academy, et cetera, et cetera, and they were out there working, and then it turns out that the economy tanked, I hate to say that, but, you know, that's a worst case scenario, and you end up having to, the city ends up having to lay off an employee, and it turns out that you get the call from, you know, the decision is made that now you, Chief, Chief Passerelli have to tell this officer, okay, sorry, your, you know, your job is being eliminated because the city has to make some cuts. How, how would you feel about that scenario? And again, it's totally hypothetical. We don't know if that would happen. It's only a possibility. And I would just like to know what, what you think about that situation? Is it, is it bad enough that you would say, oh, I would hate to be in that situation to tell someone that they're, they're getting laid off, so therefore, let's just not hire a person? I just, I guess I just would like some perspective on that.
Like, I think it's exactly what you said. I would hate to be in that position because, again, I think it's a need for our department. And as you mentioned, it's a hypothetical, certainly not a position that I would like to be in. And hopefully, you know, based on the budget that is presented as of now, is not something that I would think we would have to do.
Yeah, but it's like, I appreciate your answer. Thank you. But, you know, I guess, I guess maybe I'll ask you, Alderman Swanson, what is so horrible about having to, I understand it's never a good thing to have to tell an employee, okay, we're sorry, you know, we can't afford to have you on board anymore, whether it's a public works employee or police, you know, department employee or whatever, or I'm sorry, or what have you. But I feel like it's more, given the goals and objectives in our strategic plan and the priority that we've all been asked to, or to place on traffic safety, increased traffic safety in Geneva, I believe that came up as like the number one response from residents when they were polled, when they were surveyed, leading up to our strategic plan meet workshop. So given all that, why is it so difficult to conceive of the idea that if the economy no longer supports Geneva hire, you know, employing this new officer? Like, it's not an impossibility that we could eliminate that position. It's, it would be, it would not be, I'm sorry, I'm running out of words here, like a happy thing to do? It would, it would be really unfortunate to have to tell someone, okay, we have to eliminate your position. But what is, what is so difficult about just even the possibility of doing that? I don't know if that makes sense. I just feel like it's worth it to hire this position, fully fund the police department, support excellent municipal services, and a safe and resilient community. That is all.
Mayor?
This is a committee of the whole, so there's more or less jest with respect to process. Alderman Swanson, Alderman Caven, Alderman Kilburg, Alderman Marx, Alderman Kassarok, in that order.
Thank you. I'm going to try to address both Alderman McGowan's comments and Alderman Malandra's. And that's, yes, I agree that in our strategic plan, we, we are looking at safety and traffic safety is very important. And I'm not eliminating this position, but I also take very responsibly our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Geneva. And part of that responsibility is coming up with a good budget. And part of that responsibility is reacting to the pandemic, which is very uncertain economic times right now. So to address Alderman Malandra's point, what would the metrics be? The metrics would be, there aren't any specific metrics that we need to meet to hire a staff, but the metrics are not to be where we are now because we are projecting sales, sales tax revenue to come back to where they were pre-pandemic. And we're not there yet. Currently, the last month, we were at 89% of where we used to be. So if we're still running at that level, then we haven't recovered. So we're anticipating a recovery that may or may not occur. We don't know what's going to happen with the pandemic in the next three months or in June or in summer, or if Swedish days is going to happen. All of those are unknowns. So until we have a better feel for that, adding a staff person make, does not make, makes sense to me. It doesn't seem to be the responsible thing to do within the budget. And we don't typically authorize budgets with caveats that we're going to include this in the budget if we can afford it. We don't do budgets like that. We're saying this is our budget and these are the expenses that we anticipate and these are the hiring levels. So I think if we defer this hire for one year, we'll have a year's worth of sales tax revenue that we can observe. We can see that, yes, in fact, we have recovered and that, that consumers' behavior hasn't permanently been altered by the pandemic. All of these things are unknown at the, at the present time, and we're not recovering to the extent that we're going to equal pre-pandemic revenue levels. So that's why I am looking to defer this hire for one year. Thank you.
I believe it was Caven and Kilburg, and then I lost count. So forgive me, I'll write it down. Caven, Kilburg, was it Malandra, Marx, then Kassarok? Sounds good. Alderman Caven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say, at this point, you can probably spin the wheel. Everybody's hand is up.
Yeah, I think so.
Kidding, kidding. No, but I don't want to duplicate what Alderman Swanson just stated. I definitely agree with a lot of that. And again, my, my looking at some of this is in a broader context than specifically the police officer position. I think backfilling positions in general throughout multiple areas, I think is something that should, if possible, be paused. But to kind of go towards, I don't know, answering or at least commenting on Alderwoman McGowan's question, I have laid people off before, more people than I can count on my hands and toes. I've had this discussion many times professionally. It's never enjoyable. And yes, it can certainly be done and sometimes that's what business dictates and you have to make those difficult decisions of eliminating positions when, when handed a budget from somebody that says, this is what we have to do. We don't have any other choice. And then you get to sit and have that talk. But I will say that, in my opinion, and I don't generally like to speak with my opinion, but it's generally more difficult to lay somebody off than it is to hire somebody and have them for six months and then have to come back to them to tell them that we have to eliminate a position. Generally, there are a lot more steps that you have to go through to make sure that you're not risking, well, at least in the private world, lawsuit or many other different things that can typically happen, even when eliminating positions for budgetary purposes that you're able to, that you're able to, I don't want to say back up, but that you're able to justify. So rather than have somebody that was maybe going to be here for six or eight months, regardless of what that position is, not just to a, a, a police officer, but if we think that that's even a possibility of happening, I think that it's a better thing to be conservative and not conservative and not make those hires to hopefully avoid having to have that discussion. And if everything looks fantastic in six and seven months and we're exactly where we want to be on the road to recovery, I think it's easier to make those additions than to have to make the subtractions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Kilburg, sir.
Just a quick question. Chief, is this, this hire and the other two that we're replacing, one of the things that we've heard over the last year or two as it relates to Geneva and how minorities perceive Geneva, where do we stand as far as diversity on our force? And these three hires that we're looking at possibly over the next year, does diversity enter into that? Is that a factor that's at play here that we may not be discussing or aware of?
As far as the, where they shake out on an eligibility list or, or who decides to come here and test, we really have no control over it. As far as our, our department, I think we've done a better job attracting diverse candidates. I think we're somewhere around 20% of our department is either Hispanic or African American, which is good. And I think we're definitely continuing to grow that way. You know, I was there the day that they took the written examination. There were diverse candidates there. So my hope is, obviously, that they've scored well. Perhaps even some of them are experienced candidates and they'll be in a position to be able to be here with us on this department.
No, I've, I've witnessed over the last two or three years that, that we're trending in that direction. And I commend you, Chief, for whatever role you might have played in diversifying our police force. I think as people visit Geneva, I think that, I think that's a positive. And I think people's perception of the community will change with, with more visibility of minorities in our, in our police cars. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, I've included you on the list. Next on the floor is Alderman Malandra, then Marx.
Thank you. And Alderman Swanson, thank you for addressing my, my point. Again, I understand the uncertainty. But as I look at our situation, I think that Geneva's finances, given the pandemic, are fairly sound. I think that they're fairly sound because we budget conservatively. I think they're fairly sound because the last time we ran the budget, even after we approved the position, we decided to defer the hire. The people who made the decision to decide to defer the hire are the same people who have managed our finances and keep us in sound fiscal condition to this point, are now saying that we, we can make this hire. In terms of our fiduciary responsibility, I agree with that as well. And I think that that responsibility extends to hiring people that we feel are qualified to make these projections and, and to set these budgets and things like that. All I've heard really is, you know, here's the reasons why we're budgeting revenue the way we are. And then I hear in response, that's all well and good, but I'm uncomfortable with it because it's unprecedented. I agree that it's unprecedented, but given the pattern that it's had for the year, I think we've navigated it responsibly. And I don't see any reason to assume that we will be any different going forward. Again, I'm looking for something that, that our department heads can point to, to say, you know, we've weathered the storm. Here's the thing, here's the sign that says, this council will support me in pursuing what I need. And, and I don't, I don't hear that. So in a way, I think we're injecting a little bit of uncertainty when we just, when we just leave it vague that way. So I'm comfortable supporting it. I'm comfortable with Chief Passerelli not adding a person that he really believes he's going to have to lay off in six months or a year. I'm comfortable with Stephanie and Rita coming up with revenue projections that are realistic. They've done that all up to this point, and I think they'll continue to. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie wants to just say a couple of things before I recognize Alderman Marx.
I just wanted to...
Only if she doesn't start with Malandra's an idiot, that's okay.
No. I just wanted to, again, remind that passing the budget, yes, while it authorizes the position, doesn't automatically mean the position will be hired. For example, we have 151 full-time positions approved in the, authorized in the current fiscal year budget. As of May 1 of this year, we had 146 employees. On October 1st, we had 142 full-time employees. As of today, we have 144 full-time employees. So again, the 151 is the max authorization and things change over time, whether we get vacancies, whether we delay hiring, whether we, we determine to hire something different. So I kind of wanted to just point that out. The second thing is, there was a question about what our other communities have and looking at their budgets. St. Charles has 57 sworn officers and Batavia has 41 sworn officers. Again, St. Charles is a little bit larger, Batavia is slightly larger, but not much. It's more comparable to where we are. So we currently have 37 authorized positions. We have 35 that are currently filled. But again, I think we forget that a budget is a plan. It is a planning document that is, quite frankly, a living document. And we're constantly making revisions and looking at it and watching it, if not on a monthly basis, certainly almost on a weekly basis, so that we see, and our income comes from sales tax, it comes from property tax, it comes from all different sources, and we have to look at the, the total picture. And in this particular case, you're, you're, you're basically talking about, I think, a 0.02% of the general fund. But I think to be able to move forward this evening, at some point, I obviously want everybody to have their say. For staff's perspective, we would need a motion and direction on how you want us to amend the proposed budget. I have no issue with amending the budget, but I, but I can't kind of leave here... but I can't kind of leave here with all of the discussion and not having any resolution of what the consensus of the council is.
Alderman Marx, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Passarelli, for joining us tonight. Can you, when was the last time you actually had 36 officers, Chief Passarelli? I don't remember. We've been down for some time, haven't we?
We have been. We had 36 officers back in September of last year for a short period of time. But generally, we've been in the 34, 33 range.
That's what I thought. Do you know, on average, how many retire or resign during the year?
Well, we've hit that stretch where I had mentioned a little bit earlier about numerous officers hitting that 25 to 30-year area of their career. So we've had more retirements than we normally would. But over the past two and a half years, we've had eight new officers hired to fill retirements and their subsequent promotions that go with those. So once we get through this next stretch, I expect that we'll have a little bit of stability because we don't necessarily have a large number of officers eligible for retirement.
Okay.
And I would, Marx, Alderman Marx, if I may, I would add, just looking at the city as a whole, out of that 151 full-time employees, over the next three years, 20% of our employee workforce will be eligible for retirement.
That was my next question. You beat me to it, but that's okay. You know, I think we need it, this position. I think we've seen, you know, retirements and retiring, I think, resigning. We've had that discussion, I remember, for a couple of years in our strategic plan. Yeah, I know it might not be the most opportune time to do it, but I'd rather be on the high side than rather on the low side, because all that costs us is more overtime. And it just puts the stress on the employees that I don't think we really need to add. So I trust staff to say, "Hey, we just can't afford it at this point." So I would prefer to leave it in the budget and let staff decide whether we really can afford it or not. Because, you know, again, we're not looking until something, until January, probably February. So I think we'll have some pretty good numbers by that point of where we're at. That's almost a year away. So I think we'll have a good handle on where we are. That's all I had to say, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Casarog, then Alderman Bruno.
Thanks, Mayor. This question is really for Stephanie. So I feel like we've been talking about if things go bad after this position is filled, we would maybe have to let this person go. Is that a given? Is that how it works? If our revenues go down, we immediately go to the last full-time employee? And that person asks to leave? Or do we look at the budget as a whole and decide where things can be cut, could be cut, and make a decision, you know, looking at everything in a broad perspective?
So the answer, I guess, would be probably the latter. For those of you who were here in '09, 2010, with the economic downturn, we had no reserves at that time. We were in dire straits. We looked at all different opportunities. Do we cut capital? Typically, that's where you cut first or defer first. We went to the unions. We asked for concessions on wages. Some gave them, some didn't. And so that's how we look at it. We look at it as a whole picture and not just the last in is the first one out. Because quite frankly, we, you know, and I don't want to talk about laying off people because that's gonna be the headline tomorrow. And you're gonna have a lot of employees who will now be more concerned about whether they have a job tomorrow than doing that job. And I feel like if you read the budget and look at the information presented, I believe it is a responsible approach, and we showed that in fiscal year '21. We showed that we were able to defer and delay and to cut without having to lay off staff. The most recent article that I read about a municipality laying off staff was the village of Elgin. And the staff that they laid off were their recreation staff for their facilities that have been closed since March. We don't have those. But they also added two new full-time positions in a different department. So I think when you're trying to compare to other cities and look at other things, it's all about what your city is and what your needs and what your revenues are. So again, I know it's kind of a long-winded answer, but I look at everything as a whole. It's one big puzzle. And it fits in different ways, and Rita can chime in. She's on the phone as well. I mean, this is what we do. This is what we've been doing. And we, quite frankly, I feel that we are in far better shape than we were a mere, what, 10 years ago? So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. And so I guess I just feel like it's really unfair to be putting Chief on the spot, like he's gonna have to let somebody go if things go south. I think, you know, I'm optimistic and I'm trustworthy of staff and, obviously. And I just don't feel like we're putting Chief Passarelli in the right position here, saying, "If things go south, what are you gonna do?" I don't think it works that way, and I think that's really unfair to the chief. And I guess that has me a little worked up right now. And so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And Stephanie has really made the point that I wanted to make too. And I think, but if you're looking for consensus, I'm eminently comfortable moving forward with the budget, including this position. Thanks.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. And if I may just clarify some of my earlier comments, I am absolutely 100% on board with approving the new hire for the police department. I was absolutely playing devil's advocate to Bob's point. So I, you know, would not anticipate Chief Passarelli having to... Well, I should back up. I really didn't understand how it would work. So I thank you, Stephanie, for your explanation of what the finance department would do if the city needed to make some budget cuts. But I don't anticipate that happening. In my opinion, I do see the economy going in the right direction with the vaccine rollout, even with the COVID variants that are maybe in the news. So, and I think that, you know, I want to say, I do also trust the budget that we have and the staff. If they didn't feel it was the right time to add on this new hire, they wouldn't have suggested it to the council, as was mentioned. So I fully support, you know, that statement that's been made, that's been presented to us. So, you know, just wanted to make sure everyone understood I was playing devil's advocate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on item 3A, ladies and gentlemen? Seeing none, sensing none, we move on to item 3B, as in boy. Policy discussion on urban chickens. This is a policy discussion only. There is no action required tonight other than to seek consensus of the council, or, excuse me, committee, with respect to whether or not to direct our professional staff to ultimately create a draft ordinance for our review at a later date. So in this regard, I will defer to the city administrator with respect to how to proceed. I don't know if we have, we don't have a presentation, but-
Yeah, we do.
We do. Mr. DeGroot, ladies and gentlemen, is joining us remotely.
Chayton True is getting the presentation.
Oh, Mr. Chayton True is actually presenting this evening. Mr. True, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Certainly can. Just a little louder, Chayton, that'd be fantastic. And the floor is here, sir.
Chayton, you've been unmuted.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. A little louder, Mr. True.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's quite all right.
So tonight, the Community Development Department has prepared a presentation to reintroduce the topic of allowing chickens within the city limits of Geneva. Staff members have gathered information on benefits and concerns with chickens, a summary of chicken regulations, what other communities are doing, possible ordinance amendments. And then we will end with some broad overarching questions for the committee to consider. With that being said, let's go ahead and get started. So as I mentioned, we are reintroducing this topic to the committee tonight, which means that we have discussed this item in the past. In April of 2019, the Geneva High School Student Government conducted a mock city council meeting as part of an exercise in local government. This topic of meeting, or this meeting topic questioned whether to allow chickens within the community. Ultimately, the mock student city council voted against the proposal. Then in July of 2012, the real city council revisited the topic as it was identified as a key issue for the city council at the time. The council split on the topic with a split 5-5 vote, and further action on the issue was halted. A concern at the time was resource allocation, and it was felt that the amount of time dedicated to the matter could be utilized elsewhere. So jumping ahead to today, we wanted to begin revisiting the topic by examining some benefits, misconceptions, and potential concerns with urban chickens. So overall, there are a few common benefits to raising and keeping chickens. Some residents may find more benefits that we did not discuss tonight, but we decided to highlight pest control, alternative compost, and the nutritional value of free-range eggs. The diets of chickens mainly consist of grain. However, chickens also can control the amount of pests in gardens and backyards by consuming worms and small bugs such as ticks and Japanese beetles. Chickens also enjoy mosquito larvae, which can contribute to the control of the mosquito population during the summer months. This may alleviate some concerns with water dishes left out to hydrate the chickens. As a compost alternative, leftover table scraps such as fruits and vegetables can easily be consumed by chickens, providing an alternative to traditional disposal or compost. The consumption of these scraps initiates the cycle of chicken-produced fertilizer through their waste. This waste can also be used to help fertilize gardens and yards on residents' properties. And lastly, free-range eggs have been shown to have better nutritional value than standard factory-farmed eggs. Free-range eggs have been identified to provide improved beta creatine, vitamin A and E, and omega-3s, while also containing less cholesterol and saturated fat. Some common misconceptions we wanted to highlight include the assumption that keeping chickens automatically attracts predators and rodents. This may be true in some cases, but there are ways to proactively combat these potential issues. In some locations, the presence of chickens can attract predators such as coyotes, foxes, and raccoons. However, proactive coop maintenance and security can protect chickens thus deterring predators. It should also be noted that these predators are more than likely already within our community, especially given the robust ecosystems that surround Geneva. According to the Geneva Police Department, since 2013, there have been a total of 228 coyote sightings, which averages to about 30 sighting per year over the past seven and a half years. Furthermore, rodents are mainly attracted to chicken coops due to the environment those coops create. The coops are normally cozy-filled with nesting materials that chickens enjoy, as well as potential rodents. However, rodents are attracted to chicken feed, water, even eggs. So regular coop cleaning, timely egg collection, and nightly removal of chicken feed and water can help prevent possible infestation of rodents. The common theme here, though, is that proper security and regular coop maintenance and egg collection can help combat visits from predators or rodents. So through our research, we found potential concerns that municipalities have identified with allowing chickens. First, we'll start out with odor, just from keeping chickens. This could also be tied to health and safety, given that if the coop is properly maintained, odor may be minimal. However, odor may be a cause for complaint when it is not maintained. Appearance mainly focuses on the look of the chicken coops, how they are designed, et cetera. So this may matter to the coop owners or neighbors and the general public, who may be able to see the coop from the public right-ofways. This could be addressed by requiring coops to locate in backyards only or at a site from the public right-ofway. Though our research, well, through our research, actually, we've even seen some communities that have created design guidelines for the chicken coops just to match the neighborhood and the surrounding environment. Another potential concern is noise. Noise from chickens generally is mainly a concern generated from the presence of roosters, since roosters can be quite noisy. All cities that we compared prohibit roosters. But egg-laying hens, or just hens in general, are not as loud as one may think. And we actually have a slide coming up to compare how noisy they are. An additional concern is the slaughter of chickens on the premises. Hens that stop producing eggs over the years are potentially subject to slaughter. The slaughter of these chickens can be difficult to manage for standard households, as I'm told the byproduct can be pretty odorous. So the main question here is, where will this byproduct go if slaughter is allowed on private property? Standard residential trash service is not designed to handle waste such as this, and therefore, onsite slaughter could present a nuisance challenge. And lastly, health and safety. There are some general health and safety concerns with chickens, but from what we've found, they can be mitigated with proper coop maintenance and by following general guidelines from the Center for Disease Control. We will elaborate on that in an upcoming slide. So how loud are chickens? Not very loud. As you can see, hens cackling are about 70 decibels, which is less than a lawnmower or a barking dog, which you may easily find in your average neighborhood. But they are slightly louder than human conversation. And again, the 70 decibels, that's hens at their loudest. Focusing a little more on health and safety now. The greatest human disease risk from poultry are bacteria, salmonella, and campylobacter. In 2012, eight salmonella outbreaks in the U.S. affecting over 450 people were due to direct contact with live poultry obtained from mail-order hatcheries for non-commercial use. But proper coop management is essential, not only for poultry health, but also to minimize public health concerns, just including flies, vermin, such as rats and mice, and odor. The Center for Disease Control, or the CDC, does have several recommendations to mitigate any potential health concerns with keeping chickens. Of course, wash your hands after handling the chickens. Keep coops clean and well-maintained. Collect the eggs and throw away any damaged eggs. And avoid young children handling chickens, as they may be more susceptible to germs. So as part of our research, we examined our current code here in Geneva, the ordinance of Kent County, Illinois State, and Illinois State statutes to provide some insight to any regulations that we should keep in mind through this discussion. Our current city regulations do not allow pigs, swine, cattle, sheep, horses, goats, fowl, including chickens, or similar animals in the city, with exceptions. And those exceptions, as if it is allowed as stated in the zoning code, or if, you know, they're confined in a zoological park performing animal exhibitions, educational institutions, veterinary hospitals, or licensed animal shelters. Kent County does allow chickens in their farming and rural residential zoning districts, and also within the estate district if it is part of a farm. Kent County also has setback requirements of 100 feet between a residence and a coop. Roosters are also allowed, given the property meets a certain size of five acres or greater. We also took, like, a state statute just to see if there was any guidance or direction, you know, was provided there. State statutes just ensure that animals are not allowed to run at large and freely roam. It is implied that animals must be contained within a fenced-in area. The Illinois Department of Agriculture also plays a role in activities related to chickens. The department regulates the sale of poultry and eggs and requires egg licenses of their sale in some situations. Eggs which are intended to be sold at a local farmer's market or commercially do require license, and related facilities are subject to county or Department of Agriculture inspections. However, the department does not require an egg-selling license if the eggs are sold from the premise where the eggs were produced. These eggs can be sold to private individuals. So for example, if I had a coop of egg-laying hens on my property, I can sell those eggs to my neighbors without a license. When the egg selling crosses over to a more commercial use, this is when the coops are subject to inspections. Now, we wanted to show the committee what other communities are doing in regards to urban chickens. For this, we researched Batavia, St. Charles, Warren- For this, we researched Batavia, St. Charles, Warrenville, Naperville, and Downers Grove. Altogether, we found the following elements within each community's code when it comes to regulating chickens. These elements include, you know, the number of hens that one can have, enclosure requirements such as for coops, setback requirements of the coops, minimum lot sizes to allow for coops, yard locations, building permits, or just permits in general, and then limits on slaughter. And all that, all those items were located in certain sections of the code. Each city had a different chapter it was located within their code. And there is a chart with all this information included at the very end of the presentation in case committee members would like to, you know, take a peek at that. Overall, we found that aforementioned communities, they allow a number of hens, between, you know, four and 10 hens. There are some enclosure requirements, some form of enclosure in fenced-in areas required. Setback requirements, they are required from the primary residence and/or neighboring property line of that neighboring residence or the house itself. There are minimum lot sizes. The yard locations mainly, or most commonly, they're found in the rear yard. Building permits are required, or just some type of permitting system. And then with slaughter, it's not specific in some municipalities' codes, but where it is listed, it is prohibited. In addition, we found some model ordinance language provided through the American Planning Association. The model ordinance contained a recommendation of allowing four to six hens, prohibiting roosters, chickens not being allowed in residences, porches, or attached garages, minimum of one square feet per bird, and the run should also be no longer than eight by eight, which is the area where the chickens can be kept in some instances. And then a five-to-10-foot setback from the primary residence or a property line, and then 10 to 20 feet from a potential coop to a neighboring residence. Also, they recommend prohibiting the sale of eggs, and then also requiring some type of permit system. We also reached out to the enforcement departments of cities researched in the area just to get an idea of how many coops exist in their communities, the number of complaints they had in 2020, and the nature of the complaints. We wanted to do this just to obtain some information because we thought it could be potential, I'm sorry, it could potentially provide some insight as to what Geneva could expect if urban chickens were eventually permitted. So Batavia, they do have, they do require registration of their coops. They have 22 registered. In 2020, they had two complaints, and those mainly involved loose chickens or a lack of permits for the coops. St. Charles, there were a number of coops, I'm sorry, there were eight non-registered coops. They are aware of eight in their community. There were two complaints mainly, once again, associated with loose chickens and inadequate screening. In Naperville, they do not register or require registration of coops, but they estimate that they have between 30 and 40. In 2020, there were a total of six complaints, and those mainly were attributed to loose chickens, odor, and no permits. Downers Grove, they do require the registration of coops. They have 25 in their community, but they've only had two complaints since 2014, and those were attributed to loose chickens and a prohibited rooster. So now we'd like to hear from the committee. Staff would like to receive some direction from the committee for possible next steps. Our biggest leading question at this point is, does the committee wish to amend our current ordinance to allow urban chickens? You know, if so, what broad elements of the discussion we highlighted tonight would be included in any possible revisions? It is important to keep in mind that we do not need details tonight. We're just looking for some, you know, general direction. And staff can take this general direction and refine it with more details to include in a possible ordinance revision to bring back in the future. But staff would be happy to answer any questions from the committee, and we look forward to the discussion and identifying any possible next steps. And I apologize for the technical difficulties earlier.
Thank you, Mr. True. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, if anyone wishes to address this matter, ask additional questions of either Mr. True, Mr. DeGroot, or Mrs. Dawkins. Now is your chance. So the floor is open. Who would like to have the floor first? Forgive me for, I believe that is Alderman McGowan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much, Sheaton, for your presentation. Lots of good information in there. I do want to start by striking the results of the MAC Student Council vote on this because as much as I admire the high school students that come to the government day, sometimes they use the experience of the MAC Student Council meeting to, it's not like a, I wouldn't consider that like a really serious result, so I just want to mention that. They do have, they do learn a lot that day. I didn't realize that St. Charles requires permits. The last I knew, Batavia did require chicken coops to be permitted, just with a basic shed permit, but I did not know that St. Charles, I was under the impression that St. Charles does not require permits. So that's one question I have. And then in just my basic research in this over the past few months, I've heard from a lot of people that the best way of going about this is to not allow any type of slaughter whatsoever. And most people who keep backyard chickens consider those chickens to be more of like a family pet, so it's not like you'd go slaughter your pet. So no, I would, if we did approve this, I would prefer to see no slaughtering allowed, and then also no selling, like no selling of eggs, no selling of chickens, just no selling. So people could certainly give away their extra eggs if they had any, if they wanted to, but that's, you know, their own business. But no selling. I have heard from some experts that the best thing for a city to do is just really to keep this very simple, keep it as simple as possible. That makes it easier for city staff, and it's really not a problematic thing. And also, no roosters, obviously, no roosters would be allowed because that would create a lot of noise in the morning. And if somebody gets a chicken, it turns out to be a rooster, well, then they have to, they can't keep it, put it that way. But they wouldn't be allowed to sell it either, at least, I don't know. So that's pretty much it. There are books at the Geneva Library about keeping backyard chickens, and I had checked a few of them out, and it was really interesting to read. It was, one of the books was Keeping Backyard Chickens for Children. So this is something so simple, even children can do it. And one big benefit that I've learned about was that it can actually be very therapeutic to keep chickens, much as it is therapeutic to have a dog, or a cat, or guinea pig, or whatever, what have you, at home. Chickens also provide a lot of therapy for people of all ages, so that's another really positive benefit. In the time of COVID, they allow for socially distancing because it's just something that you do, you get outdoors, but it's in your back, the confines of your own backyard. So just some things I wanted to mention to hopefully get the discussion going a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg, sir.
I was around when we discussed this about eight or nine years ago, and my attitude really hasn't changed. You know, I, first of all, I guess I sort of resent the fact that you use the term "factory farms." And I think that, that's somewhat of a biased statement. I think if you use the term "the commercial production of eggs," you know, I think that we have to understand that we're trying to feed the world, and that trying to feed the world with backyard flocks is not a long-term solution. So to use the term to condemn the production of eggs on a large scale and labeling it as a factory farm, I think implies that that's a statement serving an agenda. And I sort of resent that. I worked in the industry for almost 30 years, so I'm quite familiar with egg production in the United States. And these are all entrepreneurs, they're family farms, and they produce eggs at a very affordable cost. I think you can go into most grocery stores and buy a dozen eggs today, probably for less than a dollar and a half. It's the cheapest source of protein that you can find in a grocery store.
What is the order? I'm sorry, what does this have to do with backyard chickens?
Alderman Kilburg has the floor.
I'm getting to the point, if you'd let me, please. Okay. I, you know, you can do all kinds of research as it relates to it, but chickens carry salmonella, and fecal material can contribute to salmonella. As recently as 2017, there were over 400 cases in the United States infecting a lot of kids under five years of age that got into the fecal material. And the fact that over a quarter, almost a quarter of those people ended up being hospitalized, that's from the CDC. The, you know, the birds transmit disease, and if you're handling birds, and if your sanitation isn't proper, people can become infected with salmonella. And chickens have contributed in to, in the United States, birds exposed to open spaces, free-range chickens. As recently as 2015, over 40 million started to have, because of the virus. Again, it was a scary disease, contributing factors to small backyard flocks that people were raising. And because of the introduction of the virus, millions of birds had to be destroyed, and it impacted the taxpayers because the federal government subsidized those losses. I'm just saying, you've got statistics about other communities. I know people in Geneva that live adjacent, or excuse me, I know people in St. Charles that live adjacent to people that have backyard flocks, and they don't complain about it because they're neighbors, and they don't want to create an issue. I think they tolerate it, but I don't think they really appreciate it. You know, the other thing is, is I think a lot of people don't realize what they're getting into. I grew up on a family farm in Iowa. We had chickens. And the thing is, is if you have to house them in like the environment that we have tonight, where they're outside, the water freezes. The other thing is, is that chickens won't lay when the temperature gets below 30 or 40 degrees. I don't know how they're going to heat these houses, so the thing is, is you're not going to get eggs in December, January, February, and March, probably, because the temperatures are prohibitive. I mean, these are all things that people realize at times. The other thing is that a chicken lives for anywhere from maybe eight to 12 years, and a hen, a commercial, or a typical hen, will live that long. But her most productive years are the first three years of its life. The thing is, is it's a case where in the third, fourth, fifth year, you're not going to, you're not going to get any eggs, so you're going to have to decide what you're going to do with your pet. And again, you know, I'll vote for this, but I'm just saying, I think that there's other things on the city's agenda and ways for staff to spend time than dealing with backyard hens and even with the inspection issues, and dealing with some of the complaints that in very beginning, you're getting. You know, if it was a 4-H project, you know, it has merit. I think if in fact we go ahead with this, I think we really have to have some well-defined codes and setbacks. And I think one of the requirements should be that the all-adjacent neighbors ought to be able to sign off on that and are in agreement that they don't have an issue with it. I think that that, you know, I guess if you're trying to sell your home and a realtor comes and they look across the fence and they've got chickens running in the backyard, I don't think that helps you move your property. Those are just some things that I've observed, and some of my feelings in regard to it. But there's a lot of excellent tests that people can have in their, in their homes, on their premises in a city. I don't know necessarily if hens should fall into that category. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the committee wish to address broadly this issue? Seeing no hands, oh yes, Alderman Kasserak.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I guess first, Gene, I actually printed out the codes from St. Charles and Batavia, looking at it over the weekend. I agree with you. I don't think, I don't see anything in the code that says St. Charles requires a permit. Just that they're not allowed to violate a nuisance code enumerated there. So, but I guess that brings up a point that I wanted to ask Mr. True, which is, I guess, how you interpret it. I think maybe it's self-explanatory, but I just want to make sure I understand it. The fencing for the screening of the chicken coop cannot be viewed from an observable height of five feet above grade, from, I believe, the property line. How do you interpret that? So if I'm a neighbor, I'm standing five feet high, I can see the chicken coop, then it wouldn't be allowed?
Yes, so it would be measured from the property line, the front property line. So at that height, five feet up, it would not be able to be viewed. It would be prohibited.
At the front property line?
Well, I guess the property line that runs along the public right-ofway, so it could be the streets, street side or front.
Okay, that makes more sense. So that doesn't necessarily have to do with the neighbors' view of the chicken coop. So if I'm in my backyard, five feet high, and I can see it, that's not applicable to what they're trying to delineate here?
Well, it could be from the public right-ofway or from the neighbor's view. It just depends on, you know, what the committee would be interested in doing, I guess. And also, when we did look at St. Charles code, they are in the middle of reviewing their chicken ordinance right now. They don't require registration, but they do, they are aware of at least eight active coops in their community. So that was what I was referencing in the PowerPoint. I'm sorry, that wasn't clear.
No problem. So I guess where I end up on this is, you know, I don't really care if people want to have chickens or have chickens in their backyard and maybe appropriate setting, you know, maybe a little more of a rural setting and things like that. But I'm honestly just not sure that people in our ward, in Alderman Mark's ward and I, that I've talked to, which is not like a scientific survey or anything, but I've literally not come across anybody that wants it, nor anybody that wants their neighbor to have it adjacent to their yard. So I kind of go back to when Alderman McGowan brought it up in New Business a month or two ago, where I asked if it was a, could be a zoning issue. Because again, I mean, if you have a five-acre yard, go for it. It really doesn't bother me. But if you have a quarter acre, half acre lot in Eagle Brook, or in Randall Square, or in Sterling Manor, I'm not sure a lot of people want their neighbors to have chicken coops out here. And we don't have an HOA to protect us, which is, I think, what City Administrator Dawkins had mentioned at the time. Well, then your HOA would take care of the rules. But we don't have an HOA, at least in Eagle Brook where I'm at, and so we don't have that sort of ability to control what happens in this regard in our neighborhood. And so I guess I wouldn't be supportive if it's just a blanket, everybody can do it. I know there would be a yard size, so I guess I should say, maybe let me back up. I would be supportive of it as long as that yard size was sufficient, I think. You know, we would have to look at comparison. I think, you know, I, we would have to look at comparison, things like that. But certainly in the size of the yards that we see out here in Eagle Brook and in Sterling Manor, Randall Square, all those things, I, I don't think that it would be supported by our ward too much. And, and so I'm not, I'm not really feeling it for out here, I guess, is all I'm saying. If Alderman McGowan, I know you've mentioned that you've talked to a lot of people that they live out here. Please have them contact us and let us know because I'd like to hear from them. But really, honestly, I, I have not talked to a single person that even wants their neighbors to be able to have it. So that concerns me a lot in regards to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to applaud Alderman McGowan for serving your constituents and, and bringing these, these types of discussions to us. In my time on the council, I have gotten virtually no contact in terms of backyard chickens. I have had some. I think Alderman Kilberg's point on complaints by neighbors, I know, you know, on, on our block here, if I had chickens, I don't, I don't think my neighbors would want to, to complain about it. So I'm not entirely sure that the complaint rate is truly representative. I, I do have some concerns about proper care. Because that's what, as the snow was coming in, I was also thinking about, you know, to, to do this right. If I wanted to do this, I would have to run electric out there and heat to make this a comfortable and safe place. And I don't know if chickens are a, a social animal. I don't know if socialization, if that type of small environment is, is good for them. That being said, I really don't have, I haven't had pressure to make it happen. But I really don't know what the public push for it is, the scale of it, or the public resistance to it. It'd be nice to have, ideally, I'd like to see a referendum. We probably missed any window to get a referendum, an advisory referendum on the ballot. But I, I really don't have much of an opinion on it other than I don't think I really have enough basis to vote for it right now. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Brughard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm torn on this one. I, you know, I, I have heard from at least one resident of our ward who wrote me during COVID. I think they're the family that gave us the public comment that's in our packet here. You know, people looking at it as a family activity and a way to remind their kids where our food comes from. And I do, I have a friend who does it, raises chickens in Western Springs. I know somebody who's more rural, west of us, follow them on Facebook. They seem to enjoy it. One of, the one in Western Springs has like a chicken coop that could be on the cover of Martha Stewart magazine. But I also know that they've been wiped out by coyotes and predators. And that's, you know, that seems pretty upsetting. So I, so I tend to want to let people do it if, if we could put parameters that, that made it consistent. But one of the things I really, it's really hard about this job is, is trying to handle neighbor disputes. And we get a lot of those, you know, and like a couple other people that Alderman said, it's like, you know, either you get along with your neighbor and so you don't want to complain or you already are mad at them about your shared driveway or your, how they don't pull their trash cans in quick enough or, you know, how they park a car, their teenager's car in the street. And, and the chickens are just a thing that, you know, add to the, the file, the file. The noise thing is an issue in that I think there's a difference between, you know, you running your lawnmower on a weekend that's for twenty minutes and it's gone or, you know, you've got your dog barking, but you get the dog back inside. If, if the noise from these chickens is kind of a constant, Mike and I have dealt with that, with a, with a neighbor who has like kind of a constant noise from, from music. And we know that that can be pretty annoying. I guess if we did move forward, I would like to see something like Batavia does where it's pretty conservative. I would want the coops to be registered. I think we need to have a discussion about setbacks and lot size. A friend of mine who lives in Batavia, who's one of the most like organic granola moms I know, has her own garden and, and front yard. And I said, oh, why don't you get back your chickens? She said, oh, my lot's too small. So, and I wonder if, where, you know, the, the yards that, I mean, if Brad's saying Eagle Brook yards are too small for chickens, then I don't know. There's any place where Mike Bruno and I have any residents who would have a yard, you know, big enough in that case to have chickens. And I do feel like the probably interest in this is going to be people who live closer to the downtown area, perhaps. I'm really struggling with it. So, you know, I guess I, I wish I had looked more closely at the Batavia ordinance to seeing what their yard size was and, and what their, the yard size is what interests me probably the most. And then, of course, the enforcement. I mean, we, we, you know, I would hate to be using Jim Forney's time and, you know, making sure somebody's pulling in the water and the feed at, at night or, or something. I, if we did a referendum, I'm sure it would fail because there's probably, if you base it on what Batavia's done, a similar-sized town, there are twenty-five people in Batavia who've gone to the effort of building a chicken coop and getting registered. And I'm sure those twenty-five people love their coops and are really glad they did it. I don't know, this is a tough one for me. So I, I'm eager to hear if anybody else has anything to say and if it makes sense to, to think on this one a little bit maybe before we give, give direction to city staff. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the committee? Alderman Swan, is that your hand up, sir?
Yes, it is.
All yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I too was struck by the number of homes that have them in Batavia, St. Charles, Naperville. They were, they were very small numbers. I think Naperville was thirty, thirty homes in a home, in a city that's much larger than us. So, so it seems that even if we were to allow this, it's not that they're going to be hundreds sprouting up in every neighborhood. It's more a case of, do we, do we want to continue to tell people what they can't do? And if we, if we don't, then it would be if we can allow something with the proper restrictions, we should, we should do so. So I, I think to answer Mr. True's first question, should they draft up amendment to our ordinance? I, I think absolutely, we should be able to see what that draft amendment would be. And then also the second part of the question, what should that include? And that would be the number of, the location, whether or not it's going to be permitted. And then we could have a robust conversation about those parameters. But I think the starting point would be, yes, let's, let's see what, what we can do. The, the number of complaints in all those communities, whether or not they're being deflated by neighborly generosity, were very minor. And, and we shouldn't think of the, the Jim Forney going out to see if, whether watering them because we, we don't do that for any other household with pets or dogs. So it, it would be the same here. What we're concerned with is safety, whether they have the permit, whether they have the number and whether they have the appropriate structure to house them. And that's it. And, and so based on the number of complaints that the other communities are getting, based on the small number of residents taking advantage of it, I think it's an opportunity to allow something that we don't have right now. So I, I would like to see the amendment proceed and then we can analyze the details at a further date. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the committee, Alderman Marks?
You know, and I, I have to agree with Brad. I really don't, we don't have a homeowners association here in Randall Square. So to police it would be a little harder. I did, right when I first came onto the council, had one resident do call and ask about him. I had five neighbors then call me and say, don't say so, but I don't want it. So vote no. Don't bring it forward. So there is that back door that people aren't going to complain, but they don't like it. If we do move forward, yeah, the lot size and the number of chickens and where they're placed in the yard are, are a major concern for me and I think for a lot of people. And realistically, I think it's the lot size. I think some of these smaller lots, people maybe on smaller lots aren't going to like it. But I don't see a lot of lots in Randall Square or Eagle Brook that are really, people are not going to be seeing their chickens from their backyard that somebody else owns. So that's a concern for me. We might have to put up some kind of barrier so they're not seen or something too. We could require something like that. I think that could put a lot of the neighbors' concerns to rest. You know, there's always a way to hide that kind of stuff. But I, I do, if we do move forward, yes, it's the lot size, it's the number of chickens. And it is, you know, who's going to be able to see it? And I would like to see some type of barrier so that neighbors don't have to see it if they don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, before I recognize Alderman McGowan for a second time, is there anyone else who has not yet spoken who wishes to do so? Alderman McGowan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just address a couple of the things I've heard. And I, I also really want to thank everyone for your comments so far and for having this discussion. You know, as, you know, this was something that several people have asked me about over the past few years. Like, why don't we allow chickens in, you know, backyard chickens in Geneva? So I'm, I'm happy that we're having this discussion. Based on the number of residents in St. Charles and Batavia and Naperville that currently keep chickens in their backyards, we know that it would be a small number of residents in Geneva as well. I think that's pretty safe to say. So I don't feel like this would be an overwhelming problem. I would invite all of you, and in fact, maybe, I thought maybe some people would, but I spoke with the code enforcement officers from both Batavia and St. Charles a while back. I, I mentioned it at a previous city council meeting here. And both of those code enforcement officers thought that when their towns voted to allow backyard chickens, they both thought that it might be a problem and it might cause a lot of extra work for them. Both of them very adamantly assured me that that was not the case at all. They were both pleasantly surprised at how a non, how much of a non-issue this was for them. In one of the towns, I can, I apologize, I can't remember which one it was right now, but either Batavia or St. Charles. Again, there were only two complaints voiced in like the past eight years. And both of those dealt with a chicken that got out of the fenced enclosure. In, in one of those cases, a child accidentally left the gate open and a chicken wandered out. And in, in both of those incidences where the code enforcement officer was called, it was just a simple matter of just, of talking to the owner of the chickens and reminding them about keeping their chickens in the fenced enclosure. And it, it, there were, there have been no ongoing problems. Now with, if you, if you get a chance to talk to the code enforcement officer in St. Charles, he'll tell you that he has received nothing but positive remarks from people. And I don't think it's a fair estimate to say that the reason why there are no complaints is that people just don't want to complain. We've all gotten anonymous complaints. And so if people are upset about something, I think they're going to say something. So, yeah, so the St. Charles code enforcement officer also mentioned, in addition to all the positive feedback he's gotten, people have actually called the city of St. Charles saying, hi, I'm thinking of moving to St. Charles and buying a house, but I want to know if chickens are allowed. So it can actually be a good thing for people considering buying a home in Geneva if they know that we're a chicken-friendly community. And I've heard from people that live next door to chick, to a family that has chickens and it's not a problem at all, they enjoy the chickens. It's, it's kind of like a fringe benefit for the family that lives next door. So, I mean, maybe some people out there really hate chickens and don't want to have anything to do with them. But I think it's the opposite. I think chickens kind of bring people together, it's a conversation topic. And now that brings me to the topic of noise. We, we heard from Chayton's presentation. The decibel level of, of hens is about the same as people having a conversation in the backyard, just talking at a, at a normal volume. And it's not twenty-four seven. So here in Geneva, we allow things like leaf blowers and we're going to hear tons of snow blowers the next day possibly. We have lawn mowers, probably some other things too. All of these, and dogs barking, those are all constant throughout the year. Dogs barking can be early in the morning, late at night, and, and that's allowed. So I just want to just get people to understand that the, the volume of chickens is, is really kind of quiet, if anything. Um, let's see here. I forgot to mention earlier, I would also be in favor of limiting the number of chickens. If I didn't say that earlier, I definitely want to say that now. I, I feel it is important to limit the number of chickens that any particular household could keep. And, and lastly, there is a Facebook page and it's called something like Backyard Chickens in Geneva. But the last I checked, there were over one hundred followers of that page. So I don't expect over one hundred people in Geneva to get chickens. But this is something that more and more people are interested in. And it is, it is special and it is meaningful for the families or individuals who really do want to keep chickens. And it's, it's a healthy hobby, it's something nice that they can do. This isn't going to bring down any, any family farm anytime soon. It's, it's, it's just not going to be enough to make a dent in like the, the egg sales at Jewel or wherever you go to grocery shop. This is just something that people do as a hobby. It's, it's, and, and in regard to disease prevention, I think everyone is so well-versed now in washing their hands and using hand sanitizer from COVID that practicing those things, when you handle a chicken, yes, always wash your hands afterwards. I think that's just common sense and that can prevent any kind of spread of disease. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee member? Ultimately, ladies and gentlemen, we will, or I will, forgive me, seek a motion to proceed as the motioner so desires, a second, and then we'll take a vote. There are a few folks who are chimed in with respect to public comment. If no one objects, I'd love to turn to Ms. Dawkins or Mr. McCready. We just have the one comment Ms. Dawkins will provide.
You all got one comment that was posted to the website this afternoon. A second comment has come in to the public comment, which is actually from the same family regarding the chickens.
Mr. McCready?
Yes, Mayor, we do have three individuals who are joining us virtually this evening. For those who are tuned in at the moment, we do have the Raise Your Hand function. If this is an issue that you wish to speak to, the city council currently discussing, or the committee, the whole, I'm sorry, currently discussing, policy discussion on urban chickens. If this is an issue you wish to share comment on or speak to, please use the Raise Your Hand function. You'll see the function annotated by a, by a hand icon. If you click on that, that'll let me know this is an issue you wish to speak to. And I will unmute your microphone, thus allowing you to comment. Again, we'll wait just a few moments here. We're not seeing anything on our end. If there's any of you who wish to share comments, please use the Raise Your Hand function.
I will await. We do, okay.
Mr. Glazier, I will unmute your microphone. I see you have raised your hand. There you go, you are now live. Mr. Glazier, I have unmuted you from our end.
He's unmuted as well.
We are still unable to hear your audio.
You can call into 4121.
Mr. Glazier, we're unable to hear you on our end. You have been unmuted, but we're not receiving any of your audio. If you wish to email a phone number to publiccomment@cityofgenova-il.us, we will receive that and we will give you a call so we can receive your comments. Once again, if you wish to email with your phone number, we will contact you. While we are waiting to receive that phone number, if there's anyone else who is on virtually this evening, if you wish to make comment on this issue, if you use the Raise Your Hand function. Ms. Pasky, I see that you have raised your hand. I will unmute your microphone now.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I know I have already emailed all of the city council members about chickens probably twice now. And I do want to say, I appreciate the discussion and all of the thought and consideration that you're putting into this decision. I myself, and I probably should say this quietly because my kids, my kids would love to have chickens, I'm not sure I would want chickens myself, because I know that it's a lot of work. But I do know a handful of people who would be thrilled to have the opportunity to have backyard chickens. And all of these people have done a lot of research on this. They know people that have chickens. They understand the work that goes into it, and it's something that they would like to do. And I just think that it hardly makes sense to hold people back from doing something like that when they're committed to doing all of the legwork of the research. It's not as easy as having a dog, they know that. But I just, I would love to see my neighbors be able to have chickens and enjoy everything that that would afford them. And I wouldn't mind getting a few eggs from them too. So I'm absolutely supportive of those people who would like to have backyard chickens. I have family members who have chickens. They live in Houston, in the city, and they have a beautiful chicken coop that they've built and rebuilt twice. We love visiting them and watching all the care that goes into raising those chickens and naming them and collecting the eggs. It's really fun. It's a great learning experience for kids, and it gives families something to do, even more especially right now during the pandemic when we're trapped at home. It'd be a great family activity and something that I know there are a few people out there who would love to do it, and I would just like to be able to support them in, in getting to have that opportunity. So thank you for considering it.
Again, at this time, if there's anyone else who is joining us virtually, virtually who wishes to speak, if you would use the Raise Your Hand function. Ms. Kelly, I see that you have raised your hand. I will offer you the opportunity to unmute. If you do, you are now unmuted and live.
Hi, this is Joe Kelly. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thanks for, thanks for allowing those public comment. My wife Peggy and I lived in a community before we moved to Geneva, Geneva, or excuse me, in Denver, Colorado, so pretty densely populated area that allowed chickens. So there are a number of our neighbors who did own chickens, and what we found is a lot of benefits to the community. Number one, it was a nice way for our children to learn how to, I guess, treat chickens, treat animals, the responsibility for feeding them, and also receiving the benefit of cuddling and things like that, but also the fresh eggs was very nice. And that actually grew the community in a, in a kind of a fun way. There are a lot of work, which in our case, we're raising three children here in Geneva, which we love, and it would allow us to give them a little bit more responsibility and also connect them to the outdoors, because those chores would be solely outdoor chores. They'd have to go outside, feed them every day, take care of them, and give them a real good sense of responsibility for something more than our dog. They do walk, but we added responsibility for our children, which we really would, would like. What else? Oh, the noise. I know noise comes up as a, as a potential downfall of chickens, but we, we never, there were never any noise complaints in Denver where we lived. There were no roosters. We wouldn't expect to want to raise roosters, which are the ones that would crow. All the hens, they stayed really quiet, so there were never any complaints from neighbors with regards to noise. The addition of, I've also heard people say that maybe this would attract other animals like skunks and coyotes, and maybe that's true. I, I don't know. I haven't, I don't know any studies or anything like that. Part of the responsibility of raising the chickens is to create and build a coop that will keep them safe. And so I guess that would be a challenge for the homeowners, but we really loved it. We loved it. We feel like it brought together the community in a lot of different ways and allowed families to have very healthy food also. These would be, as long as you feed the chickens right, you're getting very healthy eggs that you don't necessarily get from the grocery store. So that's it. I will add it back to you and I guess extend my appreciation for your consideration for this motion.
Okay, at this time, we will attempt to recognize Mr. Glazier again. I will unmute you. Again, you've been unmuted from our end, and we have also provided you, I don't believe we've received any emails with a phone number yet at this time.
And if he wants to join by audio, he can join by audio only with that phone number.
And again, if you're unable to make your microphone work on the email you received when registering for this, there would have been a phone number that you may dial in as well if you're unable to make your technology work there with the microphone.
For people to call in in case they're listening and they can't find the email right in front of them?
I do not have it here in front of me.
I do, I think.
Alderman Bruno, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any mechanism with our paper mailings of utility bills to include any type of survey
I believe the vast majority of our payments are processed online, but to answer your question specifically, I'd have to defer to Ms. Dawkins on that.
I mean, we can always put a, it costs about $600, I think, to put in a flyer in with the utility bill, but if people get it via email or whatever, they won't receive it. Probably your best option, if that's the way you wanted to go, would be to set up a Survey Monkey through the website.
Well, I know, you know, social media surveys don't, you know, they're never reliable. I'm not sure if the Survey Monkey is more reliable. Yeah, I didn't know if there was space, just, I wouldn't want to have to add another insert into the mailing, but if there was space that we could print something on the bill, I think I'd like a better feel for what the community feels, feels about it. Thanks.
Are we still having discussion now? Because I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Yeah, we are. We just want to announce that Mr. Glazier has.
Yes, of course. We're being told that he is, is not present at this time from.
Anyone else who wishes to speak from the public?
And no one else is raising their hand to speak at this time.
Thank you. Well, you know, if the city of Batavia posted a survey for their residents, they might have thousands of people that are opposed to chickens. And I don't see that being the case. There hasn't been any kind of uproar in Batavia saying, "Oh, of the 20-some residents that have backyard chickens right now, it's, it's making our city horrible, and we've got, we've got to change the code to now ban the chickens." You know, you're, you're going to get sort of an unscientific, highly unscientific results, I think. If, if you send out a survey for something that we already know ahead of time, it's only something of interest to a select group of people. Now, that doesn't mean that, and I truly feel that the vast majority of residents would be in favor of this, even if they never intend to get backyard chickens themselves. So I don't necessarily agree that any kind of survey is, is needed for this. I absolutely think that this is a topic that the city council can, can discuss and make a decision on without relying on a survey. You know, it's important to remember that we do share a really wide border with our neighbors in St. Charles and our neighbors in Batavia. So we've probably had hundreds of Geneva residents living in close proximity to people that have had backyard chickens all this time, and they just don't realize it. Or maybe they are aware of it. Like, for example, on Gray Street, which borders St. Charles and Geneva, there are at least one or two residences on the St. Charles side that have chickens, so close to the high school, so close to where many Geneva residents already live. And all these years, the chickens have already been there. I would, I would say it's the same with our, our border with Batavia. So I already feel like this is part of the Geneva community to some extent, and what we're doing is just kind of allowing our residents to have the same opportunity as our friends in St. Charles and Batavia have. So it's been working really, really well for both of those towns, as it has in Naperville and the city of Chicago and dozens and dozens of other municipalities in northern Illinois who already allow backyard chickens. So there, there hasn't been, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I know, there hasn't been a single city that has allowed, recently allowed backyard chickens and then said, "Oh, you know what? It's caused too many problems. We are now reverting back to banning backyard chickens." You know, name, name one city that, you know, try, try one city where that's happened. I will totally take back my words, but right, right now, I Googled, I researched, I never saw anything like that. So there's always one more thing I want to say, and then I forget it while I'm talking, so it'll probably come back to me in a few minutes. There was something else I was going to say.
Okay, nope. Mr. McCready, I'll check with you again. Is anyone online wishing to comment in the public comment phase?
We've got no, no new individuals raising their hands at this point. We'll, we'll see. Not at this time.
Anyone else on the committee? First to those, Alderman Burghardt.
Thank you, Mayor. I just said I was kind of tossed, a toss-up on this one, but Alderman Swanson and our public comments swayed me. I would like to move forward, and I would like to see us brought back an item for consideration that is on the conservative end in terms of number of chickens kept and setbacks and that sort of thing. So I'm hoping we will move forward tonight. I will also say, it is 9:10 at night, and I know we have a really, another important thing to discuss, so I hope we can wrap this up and, and move forward quickly so we can get to that next one. So we had three big, big things to discuss tonight, so. But I am glad we're having this debate and discussion, and I'm glad some people got to call in and participate virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the committee who wishes to make a motion?
Alderman Caven wanted to say something.
Alderman Caven, sir?
Sorry. I just wanted to say that, you know, if, if this does wind up passing, I definitely hope that, you know, we are able to have that discussion of what parameters there do that, that I think that there needs to be to make sure that if we do this, we certainly do it appropriately. And I also just wanted to apologize, I lost my audio for about 10 minutes, and no, I'm not looking for a transcript to be read back, but I, I did lose, I did lose my sound for a little bit. But if this does wind up moving forward, certainly hope that we have a, a, a more in-depth discussion about what parameters there needs to be if this does move forward. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the committee who wishes to entertain a motion? Alderman McGowan?
I'd be happy to entertain or make a motion. I, if you will allow me, the one thing I forgot, and I just remembered, that in my research, a lot of kids with autism really benefit from having backyard chickens. It's just shown to be, for some reason, like a very beneficial thing to have for children and adults that have autism. So that's just something that I, I learned from reading all those books from the Geneva that I learned from reading all those books from the Geneva library and my research online. So with that, I would like to make a motion to kindly ask city staff to draw up some, I don't know, with some verbiage so that we can, so that our city code can reflect the fact that we now would like to allow for backyard chickens. And that probably wasn't stated very well.
That's okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Tru if that's sufficient enough for you, based on not only the recommendation via the motion, but of course, the discussion all evening. Are you comfortable with preparing language?
Yes, I think just based on this discussion.
Okay.
Been able to take a lot of notes, and I think we can move forward.
Great. Is there a second to the motion offered by Alderman McGowan?
Bruno, seconds.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any additional discussion, ladies and gentlemen, before we take a vote? This motion, yes. Alderman Kosarag?
I just want to make it clear for anybody watching and double-check me too, but all we're voting for now is directing staff to create a draft ordinance.
That's correct.
We are not voting now on whether or not we want to allow chickens. So just want to make that point of clarification in case people are wondering.
That is correct. And that draft ordinance would return to a committee of the whole meeting, not for an additional policy discussion meeting. So that is correct. Anyone else with respect to the motion? Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll call.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Burghart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kosarag?
Kosarag, aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Motion to direct staff to prepare language for our consideration at a future committee of the whole meeting has passed with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We jump to item 3C, as in Charlie, on the agenda this evening, and that is an update regarding the restaurant and specialty food retailer survey that our Director of Economic Development constructed, forwarded at the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, I believe, on January the 11th. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to our Economic Development Director, Kathleen Timoshenko.
I believe that, good evening tonight. I believe Ben is going to put a graphic up on the screen for us. There we go.
There we go.
So as requested, we did reach out to our community of restaurateurs and specialty food retailers. And we sent an email note to them, speaking about where we were in our budgeting process and what we expected on upcoming fee waivers. And we talked about, a little bit about what has been done in the past to date to assist businesses with respect to waiving fees and penalties, suspensions, and regulations eliminated, and special accommodations created. And we talked to them about how we've been trying to come up with ideas to, additional ideas to assist them, and specifically, the idea that was brought forward at the last meeting about trying to contemplate an idea on imposing the Places for Eating Tax to be able to create a special COVID-19 restaurant relief fund. So we sent that email out, and we received 17 responses. Of those, we had 13 people who, you know, strongly opposed, pretty much used that language, "I strongly oppose." And then we had three people that opposed under conditions. So they, they were kind of still contemplating it. They, they expressed opposition, but they had questions or they had other tailoring that they, they might like to see. And then we had one person that just didn't think that they, they wanted to answer and they had other things to tell us. So that we were grateful for their participation, even though they didn't really weigh in on the specific question. And so of note, we had some common responses. We had seven out of our 17 people comment about the city's response to date and feeling positive about the city's response to date since the COVID pandemic, different aspects of it. We had people, four people responding that had expressed concerns about remaining competitive due to some businesses not following the order that they believed was occurring. And then we had five people who expressed that they viewed our suggestion to contemplate this idea negatively because of the past, and some people talking about what had happened in the past and trying to refresh our memory on that and why they felt the way that they did. So of the respondents, the majority were downtown independent restaurants. We had some at the Commons and some representation of east of East Side Drive. And then mainly, like I said earlier, they were mostly independent. But we did have a few franchisees of the respondents. So we hope that this graphic kind of summarizes what we found out for you and be happy to answer any questions if you, if you, if you wish.
Thank you, Director Timoshenko. Are there any, I'm going to kindly ask for the screen to be shrunk with respect to the summary so I can actually see the committee members. Ah, there they are. Any comments or questions from committee members for Director Timoshenko? Alderman Kilburg, Alderman Burghart?
I thought the survey question was rather vague in that the intent was that the entire 2% would be returned to the restaurant to help with their recovery. It simply, it just simply states that, it doesn't clarify exactly what portion of the 2% would go to the restaurant. Some might have thought that the 2% would be split with the city or would, would, the proceeds would go in some other direction. A portion of it might be retained by the state. The other, the other point that I, I thought would have been beneficial is, is if it would have had a sunset clause referenced. And I saw that the survey question didn't, didn't get into that. And that was something that I'd mentioned when I, I posed the question initially of possibly two years or three years, and then it would revert back to the way, the way that it was. I just, you know, I mean, if, I think the obiture is there, and if people aren't interested enough in, in, in responding and looking for some possible relief from, from their elected officials as it relates to COVID and the impact on their businesses, then I guess, I guess they've spoken. I guess all I wanted to do was to indicate these businesses that are the economic engine of Geneva, that are an important part. I wanted to help them accelerate their recovery and to put them in a position where they can put people back to work. And the thing is, is that really what we're talking about here is the consumption tax. And if people aren't going to go to a restaurant because they're going to have to pay $2 more on a $100 tab, then, then maybe you got some other issues as it relates to our, our dining. But I thought it was something worth giving some consideration to. And I guess if they don't want a gift for us, then that's fine. We tried. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Burghart, you had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kathleen, for the survey and the presentation. I love your snazzy, snazzy graphic. Good work. And I'm sorry if I missed this. How did you, was, is this like an email of an owner on record that you emailed the survey to? I'm disappointed we didn't get a better response, but is this kind of typical with, when, you know, I know it's hard. Everybody's overwhelmed and there's tons of stuff on their plate. But yeah, is there any, any, yeah, I'll let you answer my question, sorry.
So we do work to keep an up-to-date contact list of all the businesses. That's something that our department works to maintain so that we have the ability to communicate. We can select different groups and so that, that's some, that's something that we do. But I would say that a lot of the people who we normally hear from, you know, that people will answer and, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that are kind of thought leaders on certain topics, in certain industries, and that seems to be typical. But we do notice that it's usually reflective of a larger pool. But, you know, we, we gave people a week. You know, maybe some people didn't feel strongly enough about it, or, you know, they just had other things going on.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And I guess we can make it clear to restaurant owners that, like Alderman Kilburg said, you know, we're, we are open to ways to help. And if, you know, they want to get in touch with us, obviously, we're, we're here. And even if the survey is over, the gesture is still there. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno, do you have your hand up, sir?
It's okay. It's not worth mentioning. Thanks.
By the way, the fireplace in the background of Alderman Bruno's screen is actually a poster of a fire, which is very cool.
From his garage? Is that where you're getting that, Mayor?
Oh, nice one, Terry. I'll recognize Alderman Kilburg a second time unless someone who has not yet spoken wishes to do so.
I'm sure staff investigated our legal standing on doing something like this. What do you have to report? And was it within our power as the city council to do something of this nature?
Alderman Kilburg, I have been advised by our council that the city of Geneva, as it is incorporated and as it stands as a non-home rule community, does not have the authority to collect a tax such as being recommended and return that tax directly to an operation unless that tax is used for a, quote, "public good," end quote, such as improvements to sidewalks, streets, what have you. But to allow those monies to be directed back to the operation itself is not within our purview.
How, how is it legal then with the TIF? Because it's essentially the same, same process.
Yeah, TIF statutes are different in that regard. There's been some news of late regarding other communities doing certain things. Those communities are, A, home rule. The abatement back to restaurants or other businesses are allowed under the, A, home rule authority, and B, under the separate tax that they implemented based on food and beverage, et cetera. So I heard from a number of restaurateurs, and quite frankly, I actually heard from a, a couple of our smaller coffee shops and even a convenience store operator, who we all know would also impact their operations if we were to implement a Places for Eating Consumption Tax. Whether it be the 7-Elevens on State Street, whether it be the small coffee shops on Third, you name it. They weren't terribly thrilled with the idea. And when they asked me point-blank, does this mean I can keep that extra money? I unfortunately said, no, that's not the case. So, and I'm happy to have Mr. Sandak opine next week if you'd like, or when we meet again, if you would like.
No, I just, I was just curious because I thought that would have been the first step before we even sent out a survey to see what, what legal parameters would come into play as it relates to whether or not we could do that. Before we took, went to the bother of sending out a survey, we'd have made a determination on more specifics on how those funds might flow back or would not be able to flow back to the, the restaurant or the eating establishment. So that's fine. Thank you.
True. And just to clarify, we did do that in tandem. When the survey was sent out, we also then engaged Mr. Sandak and, and others. And then he made, or he conducted the research necessary, including speaking with officials downstate. Anyone else on the committee? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to item number five, or excuse me, four, New Business and Public Comment. I'll first check with Mr. McCready to see if anyone is connected and wishes to provide any public comment on any topic.
No new individuals joining us at this time, sir.
Ms. Dawkins?
No public comment.
Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, any new business? Or questions or comments or what have you? Alderman Bruno?
I would remind residents to remove their cars from the street tonight to facilitate, facilitate plowing.
Thank you, sir. It's not snowing here. Is it snowing at your house? Anyone else?
I just assumed.
Just assumed. Happy to entertain a motion to adjourn if the committee feels so strongly.
Marks, so moved.
Thank you, Alderman Marks. Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Swanson, aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Burghart, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kosarag?
Kosarag, aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Be careful. As many of you probably read, there is an opportunity for our region to advance to the Tier One, perhaps in the next day or two. So if that good news, of course, is announced, and you don't see it first, I'll forward it to you. Otherwise, Operation BMW will always remain in place. Back up, mask up, wash up. Be safe. Be careful shoveling. It's going to be a heavy and wet snow. So have a great night. Thank you, everyone.